Good evening, everyone. We'll bring the May ninth City Council meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll make a motion to adopt an agenda. Under consent agenda, I'd like to add 5.0 to G is in George, approving plans and specifications and direction to solicit bids for the 2022 Street Surface Improvement Project. And then under Department Reports, I'd like to pull 701 A1 Administrative Subdivision 3133, 2342, 0001.
This is her second.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion? Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. On to consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt an agenda.
Second.
Motion made second. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to pull item F, please.
Okay, F is in Frank. Any other discussion? Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Suzanne, item F.
I'm kind of curious as to more information on this because there isn't a lot in the packet and I've never heard of this urban requalification. I'm curious as to how often we use it, what, how does it work? And how often has we used it, I guess. I think there's another way I'm trying to phrase that, but it's not coming up.
This is the process by which the county becomes eligible to apply through the county. The city becomes eligible to apply through the county for community development block grant funds and home funds. And if we opt out, we can still apply at the federal or in state level, but not to the county. The county is a lot easier process to use. And if we opt out, then we can't use Anoka County for the next three years. The last time we used this, we got community development block grant funds, I believe, in 2017 for a septic rehabilitation project in Coon Lake Beach, but we haven't used it since then. But it is useful to opt into this program because it's a lot easier to apply through the county to get the funds than it is through the federal or the state level.
So it's grant funding about how much is available, how much can we get? And what else would it be used for? I mean, I just thought was for like HUD and all those kind of things. Do we give, do we help people with it or?
The county actually sets the priorities for the funding programs. They can be used for housing projects. The one that we use for, it was for septic system rehabilitations. It can be used to correct blight and disrepair properties. There's a variety of things it can be used for, but the county sets priorities every year on what the top ones are. So we don't know what they are until we get their priorities. But they're generally more along those type of levels of project activities.
And about how much does the county tend to give out?
It varies with how many applicants there are. I think the one we got was for over, I think it's probably close to $300,000. We did about 13 projects and all of this was no match. There's no, we don't get any administrative fees for administering the grant, but it was all 100% grant money.
And it doesn't cost us anything to be a part of this?
No, not a thing.
Perfect. Thank you. With that, I make a motion to approve item F on the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. That completes our consent agenda. New business, Planning Commission. Stephanie.
All right, the item is for the preliminary plat for Prairie Hills. Applicant is teach construction of Anoka. This preliminary plat is located just east of Rendova Street in between the 209th Avenue and 213th Avenue. The plat consists of 16 buildable, single-family rural residential lots. Of the proposed lots, one lot will be the minimum acreage of two acres and the rest of the lots are proposed to be 2.54 acres. The building and public works departments reviewed the preliminary plat and are in support of the subdivision as proposed with no comments on the plat. The city engineer also reviewed it. His comment letter dated April 4th, 2022 is part of your packet. All items will need to be satisfactorily addressed prior to the final plat. Engineering items include, but are not limited to, an approved wetland delineation, lot tabulation, stormwater management plan, and vehicle maintenance access easements. The city engineer comments that need to be addressed won't change the layout of the plat at all. It's just updating some of the information that we'll, that we need from them. Parks Commission reviewed the plat at the February 8th, 2022 meeting and they made a recommendation of park fees in lieu of land. And Anoka County Highway Department also reviewed it. Their letter is also part of the packet dated April 26th of 2022. The proposed plat is requiring the dedication of a 60-foot right-of-way as shown on the plat, as well as an addition of a turn lane, which is not illustrated on the preliminary plat. The developer and their engineers well aware of this. They're working on updating that to show it on the plat. Planning Commission held the public hearing on April 26th, 2022. A resident had questions about the construction type of the homes and when construction will begin. Types of homes mostly are two-story walkouts that will be built in there and they hope to start the project as soon as actually the final plat is approved. Planning Commissioner Placent did initiate discussion stating he felt the city should request a sidewalk be placed on one side of the street in the development. The commissioners Johnson and Creppa stated they did not see value in adding sidewalks in this particular development. As it's a rural residential development, there's not curb and gutter. They're going to be built as rural standards, the ditches will be. The commission did vote unanimously, 7-0, in favor of the recommendation of the approval of the preliminary plat. So the commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat, known as Prairie Hills, with the conditions set forth in the attached resolution number 2022-26. City Attorney did review the plat and the resolution and he is requesting that condition number five in the resolution be amended to read. If you look at number five of it, it says, "Prior to final plat recording at Anoka County and would be striking through final plat recording at Anoka County," and adding the language, "The developer initiating of any public or private improvements within the plat. A development agreement acceptable to the city attorney must be executed by the developer and filed with Anoka County." And the developer is not here this evening, so if you have any questions, I will try to answer them for you.
Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion to approve resolution 2022-26, approving the preliminary plat of Prairie Hills.
A second.
Motion made second. Discussion.
Sis, with the amended condition of number five.
Chris is okay just to reference what was cited?
That's fine to reference what's cited.
I'll make a motion to amend the motion regarding number five to reflect the changes that were suggested by the city attorney.
Second.
Motion table, or motion to amend has been seconded. Discussion on the motion to amend. Okay, on the motion to amend, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That passes back to original motion as amended. Any other discussion?
I have a question. How did they come up with the name of Tippy Canoe? Because it seems like Tippy Canoe is gonna go up this way and this is going that way. So it just seems like because there's Tippy Canoe over there already, you know, and near me. And it just doesn't seem like it would connect right.
Right. We have on our maps, we have a system, a grid system, and we follow that grid system. And so this follows in line with Tippy Canoe.
It just seems like it makes some postal problems, but okay. The other thing I wanted to mention on that is I was at that planning commission meeting and I heard, I listened to Mr. Placent and I don't, if these roads are gonna be wide like the road I live on, and I think they are, I don't think sidewalks are necessary, but I think faster roads like 213th needs a sidewalk because I can see all those people walking with little baby carriages up to 213th, turn left and go down Rendova or Okinawa and with dogs and babies and be, and that's a fast road. People don't drive even go 55 on that road. So, and it's a ditch, so they can't even go down into the ditch to walk. So that should just be a consideration with that. That's all I have to say.
Any other discussion? Okay, to the motion as amended, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. 682.
The next item is a site plan review for Oak Ridge Auto Body located at 23428 Highway 65. Howman Architects is requesting a site plan review of a 4,900 square foot expansion of the existing structure for Oak Ridge Auto Body. So up on the screen on the right-hand side, we have an aerial of the property. So the 4,900 square foot expansion would happen on the north side of the building. And then the exterior storage area of 432 square feet, that expansion would be on the south portion. Oak Ridge Auto Body is a legal, non-conforming auto repair business that's existed for years in the city of East Bethel. The adjacent property to the north is zoned light industrial and the property sharing the south and western property lines of this property is a legal, non-conforming residential property. The proposed exterior storage is consistent with the current structure, which is legally non-conforming. So the whole building will be re-sited and the addition will match. Approved, approval of this site plan would be an expansion of the legal, non-conforming status of the structure and the building materials. However, the owner will carry the same materials through the addition and the existing building. The proposed plan shows a slatted chain link fence. So there's gonna be a chatted, a slatted chain link fence bordering the west and southern property lines to screen the property that has the residential house on it. So the house is on a property that's zoned light industrial. So again, that's why it was a legal, non-conforming use of that property. Our code does state that any business, industrial, non-residential uses and residential dwellings other than detached, single-family adjacent to residential districts shall provide screening along the boundary of the residential property. Again, that's why he will be adding that slatted fence along those property lines, just to screen it from that house. For the lighting, on the addition, he will add lighting to the building. And then also city code states, city code states that motor vehicle sales and service establishments are required three spaces, parking spaces, per 1,000 square feet of building plus two spaces per 5,000 square foot of lot area. So the total finished area of this building will be 8,900 square feet, requiring a total of 24 parking spaces on the property. However, the business does not offer walk-in services. He does only do work on accident vehicles. So considering the current use of the property, knowing that it's not a high-traffic area, staff does find the proposed 10 parking spaces reasonable for the following reason. If needed, there is adequate space to expand the parking area. If the use changes on this building, say he sells it to somebody else or someone else moves in that needs more parking, there's ample room to expand the parking area. The property owner is also aware that the lot needs to be paved, but due to current financial circumstances, he is asking a two-year extension on the completion of the paving and the striping of the parking lot. And he would also be adding parking lot lighting at that time. The site plan was reviewed at the April 26th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. There was no discussion and the commission voted 7-0 for the recommendation of approval to City Council. So at this time, staff recommends the council review the site plan and approve the site plan with the conditions set forth in resolution 2022-27 with the accompanying exhibits. And the property owner is here if you have any questions with him.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2022-27, a resolution approving the site plan review for the expansion of a legal, non-conforming motor vehicle repair facility located at 23428 Highway 65, pin number 32342324-0008.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion.
I just say it looks nice. I mean Mitch is gonna, it's gonna look nice when he gets done. I know it's kind of a bland building down there with all these, all this new site and everything. It's gonna look really nice down there. It'll fit in real well.
I am, I got a call from that, I think it was that resident, unless there is another resident that had the same issue. But they're very upset that they were residential, zoned residential and then it turned to the new zoning, which is mixed use. What is it?
It's light industrial.
Light industrial. And I'm not sure, but does that resident, if they sell it, does it, can they just, it's gonna still always be this legal, non-conforming resident?
It will. Yep, they could still use it as a residential property or if they wanted to, they could turn it into an industrial, light industrial property.
Okay, 'cause I just know they're very unhappy and they wanted it to be rezoned back to their house alone, zoned it back to residential and like, I don't know how that works, so I'll ask.
Yeah, I'm not sure when the zoning changed on it. I don't believe it did this last round.
I don't think it was this round. It's been a while.
They just found out apparently.
Okay.
I mean, there's, when that happens, there's no real effect on that property, correct? I mean, they, they can continue to use it as residential. They could sell it.
They could build accessory structures.
Yeah, they can do everything they can on a residential. It's just, there's an option, you know, put it that way.
It actually benefits.
Doesn't change the tax base at all.
Perfect. All right, thanks. That's all I had about it.
Question I have is, they're requesting a two-year extension for paving, but we're giving them a three-year extension?
Oh, there may be a...
The date says 2025.
Okay, that's a misprint. It should be 2023.
So it should be 2024?
Or 2024, yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion to amend to revise item five of the now there for's in the resolution to read June 1st, 2024 rather than 2025.
Second.
Second. Motion to amend has been made second. Any discussion? Hearing none on the motion to amend. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes back to the original motion as amended. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing none to the motion as amended. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. On to Department Reports, Community Development. Stephanie.
All right, the next one is an administrative subdivision property line adjustment for the properties at 19683 and 19704 Rochester Street. This property is located, do we have Viking Boulevard down here and Rochester Street? So it's at the very end of, northern end of Rochester Street. Ronald Scott owns right now 20.72 acres, which would be this upper area here. He was approached by the neighboring property, Jamie Whedenbach, to purchase a portion of the property, which would then be combined with his property. The proposed property adjustment is for 2.86 acres, which would result in 19704 Rochester Street becoming 17.87 acres and 19683 Rochester Street becoming 4.86 acres. So just show it on here. Again, these are the two properties that are affected. We have Whedenbach's property down here and then we have 20.72 property up here. You go to this slide, what happened is they would split this 20-acre parcel, creating this two-acre parcel, 2.86 acres. It'd be combined with Whedenbach's and this acre over, or property over here would stay with Ronald Scott's, which is over here. And we have the survey. So what will happen if this is approved tonight as part of the resolution is the lot that's being split off, the 2.86 acres, will be required to be combined with Jamie Whedenbach's property here. Again, that would be making that a 4.86 acre parcel. There are no park dedication fees required because we aren't creating any new lots. So at this time, City Council is requested to consider approval of the administrative subdivision for the property line adjustment with the conditions set forth in resolution 2022-29 with the accompanying exhibits.
Is there a motion on this resolution tonight?
Make a motion approving resolution 2022-29 administrative subdivision lot line adjustment.
Second. Motion made second. Discussion.
Stephanie, I thought I had heard, he can't build on this piece, right?
He can build the outbuilding.
He can?
Yes.
Okay, I thought Aaron had said there was...
No new home.
No, not a home, but no, I thought there was no building whatsoever.
Yep, no, it can be for the construction of an outbuilding. But he cannot keep it as a separate parcel and build another home.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Before we get off this item, I noticed Tom Mike is here. We pulled your item from the agenda. You're aware of that?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure, so. You just want to make sure we did it? Okay, okay. We won't talk about you without you here, how's that? Okay, on to Public Works. Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you, Steve. Item 7.1, 2023 through 2027 Roads Capital Improvement Plan. City staff prepares an annual roads capital improvement plan, which updates projected projects, evaluates needs and establishes funding for these works for the coming year and for each of the subsequent years over the five-year period. This plan is presented to City Council for their approval and use for preparing the coming year's budgets. Approval of the plan only commits the city to the projects listed for 2023. Exhibit as attachment one is the draft 2023-2027 Road CIP as proposed by city staff. The starting balance for 23 reflects the anticipated cost for all the 2022 road construction projects, including the reconstruction of 181st Avenue, the Shenandoah, Shawnee Woods, and Pine Grove Estates overlays, and the North Metro Joint Powers Maintenance Projects. This plan requires a proposed general transfer of $500,000 into the street capital fund for 2023, which is consistent with the 2022 transfer. There will be a negative balance in the municipal state aid account due to advanced funding for the Sand Hill Parkway and 181st Avenue projects. The negative balance in the MSA account is not an indication of too many projects, but a need for numerous projects that can be funded within the regulations established by MNDOT. The city can advance fund for projects not to exceed the limits of up to four times the annual construction allowance or $3 million, whichever is less. Our current projected annual allotment from the state of Minnesota is $663,000. MSA advanced funding is interest-free and involves no city general fund expenditures. Staff recommends city council approval of the 2023-2027 MSA and street capital improvement plan as exhibited in attachment one.
Make a motion to approve the 2023 through 2027 MSA and street capital improvement plan as shown in attachment one.
Second. Motion made second. Discussion. Hearing none to the motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. On to City Administrator.
Item 7G1, 2022 Serena Projects. St. Francis Youth Hockey Association has $100,000 to contribute to improvements to the arena. Their volunteers are interested in doing work in the lobby. They would like to concentrate their works in this area. The following are the items they have priced and presented to date. A 4x6 enclosed bulletin board with tempered glass banners that would feature all their youth hockey players and go inside the 4x6 bulletin board, banners and logos for inside the arena, paint and supplies to repaint the lobby with their volunteers to do the painting, two to three tables and chair sets, and a new garbage can. These expenditures would total $4,053, leaving them a balance of slightly less than $6,000 for other types of improvements. They've discussed some floor improvements, but I don't believe their balance would cover this. Some of these funds, we'll talk with them and decide how best to spend them for arena improvements. As far as the volunteers goes, we checked with the city attorney and the League of Minnesota Cities. The city does have insurance coverage for volunteers on their existing policy. The only thing that has to be done to register people is all the volunteers have to sign up, give their name, address, so that they'll be noted at the start of the project so nobody can come along at the end and claim they were injured. So we do have that coverage in place. And again, this has been reviewed with the city attorney and he is in concurrence with the ability that this can covers. The city projects for the arena are proposed to include the painting of the interior walls of the arena, replacing of fixtures, lights, partitions, and paint the public restrooms, and replace approximately 1,000 square feet of rubber flooring from the public restrooms to the player's bench on the northwest side of the arena. The painting includes all the prep for the painting and cleaning and also this would include a hot water heater that would serve the restrooms and the concession area. As we, as y'all were shown, the existing hot water heater is back near the Zamboni Room and it's approximately 150, 200-foot run, so it takes a long time for the hot water to be delivered. This would include a new hot water heater to serve the restrooms and the concession stand. The stall partitions are not priced in this estimate. They're still getting those. But the balance left over in the St. Francis fund would probably cover those and we would work with them to see if they would be interested in funding this part of the cost. There is one painting quote attached for your consideration. It's from Smith Brothers. We were notified today that we will be receiving another painting quote tomorrow. We don't think that it will be anywhere near what this one is, but I would recommend that we wait till we get that quote until we make award for the Smith Brothers quote. So the city arena upgrades are estimated to cost $56,000. Expenditures of this amount would leave a fund balance in the account of $126,000. These are enterprise funds and paid by user fees. No city tax dollars would be used for this project. Staff request City Council consider approval of up to $56,000 in arena funds to complete the city project is noted in the report and we will follow up with you on the second quote for the painting at the next council meeting.
Make a motion to approve up to $56,000 in arena funds to complete the city projects and review of interior painting quote at a future date.
Second.
Motion made second. Discussion.
Do they have a starting date on any of these projects? Anything started yet?
We're still working with them on the...
We're still working with them on that. I think they're ready to start trying to do some work at any time, and part of that would be getting those old trophy cases out of there, so they can get those walls ready to be painted and prepped. And they're also working, trying to get some information on a quote for a floor, or what they could possibly do with that. So, I would anticipate that they could probably start by sometime in early June, which is what we would hope to do with the painting job, get that done in June.
So, with all the items listed, both with what St. Francis Hockey wants to do, and what we're slated to do in this list, are all stakeholders satisfied with, with what's gonna be done?
Yes, we met, we've met with them on three different occasions, and the last time we went over these as the priorities, and they're all satisfied and agree to it.
Are there any items that they wanted that we're not gonna address at this time?
Of course, the whole project, which the second part would be done next year, would be to change out all that rubber matting back in some of the dressing rooms. But because of the cost of this, I think it would be best that we kept our account balance in that 100 to 120,000 dollar range, and that would be the second part of the project, to do that next year.
And, there's no discussion here about the locker rooms, I know there was a lot of concern with those, the other locker rooms, is that part of next year?
That would be part of next year, and part of some things that Gibson would be doing, to clean up and do some repainting in those locker rooms.
But I mean, there's repairs too, I mean, there's stuff falling off the walls.
Oh, yeah, all, all, all the shelving, all that wooden shelving in those locker rooms is going to be removed. All, all it is is something for people to hang on and tear down. It's usually in the locker rooms where the youth hockey are. So, in lieu of those shelving, we're gonna have Gibson put up hooks or things like that where they can hang things.
Okay. Any other discussion?
A little bit. As we do with our parks and roads, where we have a year-to-year schedule of either plans or activities that we are going to do with them, I was wondering if we could come up with the schedule for the ice arena for future projects for 2023, 2024, 2025, of what we'd like to accomplish so that we kinda don't get into this scenario again of, oh no, all these things need to be done.
We can certainly do that.
So I, I think if we can review it yearly with, along with parks and roads, then council will be up to date and aware of those projects, especially if new council members come in and future councils. I think that would benefit the arena, and so that focus on updates or repairs are, is always a yearly discussion.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
Item 7.0G3, refund the proportion of the 2021 charitable...
Jack, you skipped two.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. 7.0G2, call for a special meeting. The East Bethel EDA will receive the broadband gap analysis report from Finley Engineering at 6:00 PM at their May 16th, 2022 meeting. In order for a majority of the council to be in attendance for the presentation, a special meeting will need to be called for the time, date, and specified purpose of the meeting. The mayor or any two council members can call for a special meeting. Staff request Mayor Voss call a special meeting to the city council for 6:00 PM, Monday, May 16th, to convene with the East Bethel EDA and receive the broadband gap analysis report.
I'll call a special meeting of the city council at 6:00 PM on Monday, May 16th, for a purpose, or convene with our EDA for the purpose of receiving the broadband gap, gap analysis report.
Second.
Motion's made second, discussion. Can we, since we're gonna have a bigger group, can we make sure we have enough microphones for...
I don't, I don't know if we can get it done at that time. EPA, the outfit that did this, will be here tomorrow to see what they can do, and we'll see if we can expedite that to get something done by Monday, the 16th. But we contacted them, they're gonna be here tomorrow to give us, to look it over and give us the cost estimates.
Okay, good. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. Oh, item G3.
Thank you. Refund the portion of the 2021 charitable gambling receipts. As discussed at the previous two city council meetings, the city received more gambling revenue in 2021 than the cost of regulating this activity. As the amount of revenue significantly exceeded the cost of regulations and contracted law enforcement side inspections of the exterior premises, trade area patrols were no longer allowed as ineligible regulation expense, the city has been required by the Minnesota Gambling Control Board to refund these non allowable expenses to the licensed organization. The city was notified of this situation on March 17th, 2022, and the reimbursement's total $47,081.51. It should be noted that expenses for the Anoka County Sheriff's Offices for patrol of the trade area were allowed in every report filed with the Minnesota Gambling Control Board from the city's adoption of the 3% gambling tax in 2006 through the end of the year 2020 reporting period. The city received no prior notification for the 2021 report that contracted law enforcement expenditures were no longer allowed as eligible regulation cost. The reimbursement for 2021 would be a one-time charge. Reimbursements for excess January through April 22 gambling tax revenue will be addressed after the closeout of the calendar year and refunded in 2023. This amount is estimated to be $20,000. The city amended city code Article 5, Section 42, lawful gambling at their April 25th, 2022 meeting to require charitable donations in lieu of the gambling tax. This change will eliminate the possibility of the recurrence of this finding by the Minnesota Gambling Control Board in future years. At this time, staff request city council approve the reimbursement amount of $47,089.51 for the five licensed charitable gambling organizations identified in attachment one.
I'll make a motion to approve the reimbursement amount of $47,089.51 to the five licensed charitable gambling organizations identified in attachment one.
Second. Motion made second, any discussion?
I am just wondering how you're going to break up that reimbursement, is everybody going to get an even amount, or is it gonna be based on the percentage of what they paid in?
In, in, in your attachments, it shows the breakdown of what those reimbursements are, and it was based on their proceeds that they turned in from their reports over the year.
It's in attachment four? Or page 92 in our packet?
Page 89, no.
It's, it's...
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine?
It's in also, it's in attachment one also on the back of the page, it shows... Hang on just one moment, I'll show you.
Any other discussion?
Got it, thanks. I didn't see this page.
Any other discussion?
Jack, are, are you gonna notify these?
They, they...
They're getting a refund?
They, they have been notified, their reports have been changed, we'll receive a different report for May, and they've been notified that they will see, receive the refund.
Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? To the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes. On to staff report.
The only thing I have to add is there's going to be a program at Cedar Creek Ecosystem and Science Reserve on June 2nd for what appears to be some interesting topics for discussion with some of their scientists and some of their projects they have. So, if you want any more information on that, we have it posted on the website, and it'll be on the reader board beginning the week before that. So, does appear to be an interesting item to attend. We haven't heard any word yet, I've been asked many questions about are the buffalo coming back?
Bison.
Bu, I'm sorry, bison. So, I haven't heard any word yet on that, so I'm not sure, we're, we're still checking on that.
Was that the email that you sent out today?
Correct.
That might actually be located down in St. Paul. That's where they would be presenting it.
Okay, alright, I wa, I wasn't sure where that hall was, I didn't know if that was a hall named up at their center or where it was. But we'll, there, there's a link on there, if you follow that link, it'll give you the specific address.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Oh, yeah. Council reports, Brian.
Went to the planning zoning meeting. They reviewed the two items that we approved tonight. One note, some members of the P, planning zoning may be interested in considering adding a sidewalk to one side of the streets and rural residential developments. Staff spoke during this discussion and stated that they were already looking at revising and updating the trail plan, which would include those kind of details.
That it?
That is it, I hope everybody stayed dry and safe this, today.
Suzanne?
Yeah, I have two things. My first thing is regarding our animal control. It seems that our police officers are telling residents that call for to pick up dogs that Gratitude Farms is still the contracted place to take them, and they've taken them there. So, there's some kind of miscommunication because North Metro hasn't, can't go out and get a dog unless they receive a call or a, they use a special word for it.
Dispatched.
Dispatch. And they haven't been getting them, and so there's some kind of miscommunication with our, our police department, and I would like to see if that can be checked on and see, and I, I know we're losing North Metro, but right now, there's some issues.
Yeah. That was, that was, there was an incident that happened last week, and we did contact Lieutenant Peters, he checked on that, and it was reported that dispatch had told them to take that to Gratitude Farms, and that was immediately corrected, the dog did wind up at North Metro, so dispatch has been given explicit instructions that those animals would be taken to North Metro.
Thank you. And then, the only other thing I have is Wednesday, May 11th, at 4 o'clock, there's a airport commission meeting. Public's invited, it's going to be at Blaine Airport in person, it'll be the first in-person event we've had since COVID started, so everybody's welcome. Chris Webb of Minnesota Helicopters will be presenting, so if you're ever curious about how to get a helicopter ride over the cities, this would be a good time to come and visit. That's all I have.
Okay, Tim?
I've got a few things here, April 28th, we approved the 2023 budget for Anoka County Fire Protection Council. And last week on, I had both watersheds, on the Upper Rum, we approved the 2023 budget. We had an update on the Rum River Bank stabilization, Lake George shoreline stabilization, and the watershed base implement and funding grant updates. And on a sunrise, we approved the 2023 budget was approved. We got any amendments to the JPA, and we had current grant financial reports from Anoka Conservation District, and that's all I got. Well, one more thing, if there's any trees on the city streets, if anybody sees any, they get ahold of Public Works, there's a lot of trees came down this morning, and they might have missed something, but just call Public Works.
Okay, great. And speaking of Public Works, we gotta notice tonight that the county is doing a culvert replacement project on Fawn Lake Drive, and the expected closure is from May 16th to the 20th, and there's a detour, so, on our north side of the city. And then, the other thing I have to add is, our East Bethel Bandits played their inaugural game on Saturday at Booster West, and it was nice to see after 15 years that our town ball team for East Bethel, is actually playing in East Bethel now, so. That was, like I mentioned last time, because of no lights on the field yet, they, they can't play night games, but it was a good day, it was fun, it's a good event, it's nice to see baseball going on over there, so.
Did they win?
No, but they almost came back, so. It's not, you know, at, at that low, the town ball is a different, it's, it's not major league, it's, it's, really, really encourage residents to go out there on, once they start playing home games again, so. But, no, it was a good game, fun time, so. And they'll be playing there on Booster Day too, on the same field, so. And that's all I have, so with that, Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor Voss, for the benefit of the public and the record. The city council for the city of East Bethel will now vote to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D.03, subdivision one, to discuss developments and review labor negotiations proposals. The meeting will be recorded as required by statute, and that recording will be kept for the statutorily mandated period of time. The meeting will commence immediately once the council votes to go into closed session. After the closed session, the city council will come back into chambers and return to open session. With that, Mr. Mayor, at this time, a motion can be made to go into closed session.
Make a motion go into closed session for the purposes that the city attorney has indicated.
Second. Motion made second, any discussion? Hearing none, to the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes, we'll go into closed session, and we'll come back. Mr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor Voss, for the benefit of the public and the record. The city council for the city of East Bethel is returning from closed session back into open session. The closed session was held pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.03, subdivision one, to discuss developments and review labor negotiations proposals. The meeting was recorded, the recording will be kept for the statutorily required amount of time. With that, Mr. Mayor, the council is back in open session.
Okay.
Make a motion adjourn.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes, our meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.